Welcome, everyone. The Plumbton School Committee meeting for April 24th, 2023. We have starting off a school choice hearing. So we'll have to start with that, and that's been noticed in the paper, I think, for the requisite times and all of that. So I'll open that up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to school choice? Okay? So I will open it up to the committee. So I think we need to...
I don't think that we should enter into school choice because we already have extraordinary class sizes for historicness of the Denet. Where were we last month, Peter, around 2:41?
George.
Okay. So thank you to school choice citing the size for our classes currently with their own students.
And then what is our sixth grade going out? That's a medium-sized class?
Small.
Smaller? So that's, what, about 24, 25?
24.
And we are anticipating for kindergarten?
I think 34.
All right. So we're looking at another net 10 kids into the schools who are putting this up over 250.
We're about 35 in Canada, yes.
And that, of course, can always go up. So we're looking at at least probably net 10 adds left at 250 range. Any other thoughts from the committee? All right. I entertain a motion.
So I motion that Plumbton School Committee decline school choice next year for the Denet citing class sizes as a rationale.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right.
Motion to close the public school choice hearing.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. So that took care of that piece of the business. So I know we have some visitors here. We have Mrs. Goodman, Mrs. Farlow, Ms. Schofield, as well as some of our parents, too. Just so that we have it for the record, could I have you just say who you are?
Yep. Kristen Belcher.
Kristen Belcher. Okay.
Hi, Shangeneen Standish.
Hi, Shangeneen. Okay. I got you guys. All right. So I have on the agenda school safety. Is there anything else you wanted to speak to? If not, I'm going to hold it until we get to that, which we'll just be in a couple minutes.
No, just school safety.
Okay. So let's just run through here. Did folks get a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on March 27, 2023.
Can I have a second? All right. All in favor? Aye. And any other correspondence that came in from?
We have nothing.
Nothing else? I didn't find anything in the box, so we're good with that. So for new business, I'm going to swap the order, and we're going to talk to school safety. I can let you guys talk, too, but I thought I would just give a little bit of an update for the parents and for the folks that wind up watching this. Since last June, with the events that happened in Uvalde, Texas, we've actually been holding with the police department, fire department, town administrator, and myself, representing the school committee, and of course, Mr. Benito and others, have been meeting to talk about school safety and make sure that we are doing everything we can with respect to both the physical building and trying to make sure that we have appropriate plans in place. Those meetings happen every month, every two months, depending on how we do it and going through different things. You may have seen, I think, the Plumbton Fire Department threw that up on Facebook, that they did a big drill at Silver Lake last week, I believe, and Plumbton Police and Fire were part of that drill. We did do a training here in the Denet over Christmas vacation, I believe, and they'll be doing another drill at some point this spring as well. So there's been a fair amount of coordination between our departments and across the county, and particularly with neighboring departments and all of that. So there's a lot of planning. I have to say, it is probably my least pleasant meeting to ever attend because we don't like to talk about this stuff, but we have to, and it's very, very important. We've also gone through and assessed sort of the physical building. We've made some upgrades to our security. Point in case, of course, is the front entryway. We now have additional security there in order to try and make sure that we keep everything as tight as possible, but we're constantly looking at that and going forward with that. But I know that you reached out to me to talk about a school resource officer. So I'm going to let you talk, but before I push you into having to give us a whole pitch for that, I will note that the police department has actually put on the town warrant for town meeting, a request to fund a full-time school resource officer for the Denet.
Awesome. Great. Do you know what the timing on that is?
So that would be for the new school year.
Okay. And does that go to a vote at town meeting?
Yep. So that will go to a vote 17th, I believe, of May at 7:00 here at the Denet, and that will be one of the warrant articles that will be on there. And again, it is for a school resource officer, not for just a police officer in the school. So it will be someone who has the extra training for that and will actually become part of the Denet community. It should also offer some benefits for the town, particularly over the summer months, to have other things sorted out when school isn't in session because it would be a full-time position, and it would be a Plumbton Police Officer that would take that on.
And that's a full-time position while school isn't in session?
Full-time position, probably 7 to 3 type of hours, and then would also work on other programs with the school as far as, you know, it's more than just, it's really much more than a security position. I'm sure your husband deals with that, too. I mean, it's really about being part of the school community, and we see that at Silver Lake and those schools as well. So...
So that answers a majority of our question that we had surrounding school safety. The other question that we had was, is there additional safety measures that are being taken? We know they have like those mag locks, and then the front door obviously were great ads, but as you can tell, we are surrounded by glass on every side of this building. Are there additional considerations that are going into as far as swapping that kind of stuff out to bulletproof glass or putting some kind of protective film on that desk that's kind of bullet resistant?
I'm going to answer this, and I'm not trying to be cute, but I'm just going to say yes.
Okay.
We don't really want to go through in too much detail about the type of measures that we are taking, but we are constantly evaluating different measures, again, that comes to cameras, any sort of physical access and things to help mitigate. I think certainly with, you know, assuming we get in a positive vote at town meeting, which I would hope we will, you know, having an officer on campus will be a significant benefit from a time perspective because we all know it's about time. It's about time and about training, and we saw that in Memphis, that it was a lot of training went on there, more so than time. And thanks to the head of the school, who unfortunately lost her own life, she did a lot of training there and was able to save lots of students. And so it's very important, but I think also, you know, we have to balance, you know, we could turn this into a complete fortress, but we need to balance sort of what we do there with reasonable changes and additions in order to make things safer and help to reduce entry points.
No, that's great.
Do you have anything else to add?
I don't want to think that's perfect.
Any other questions?
No. You stopped me from having to hear my whole spiel and...
I'm sorry you had to prepare it all.
I spent a lot of time writing it.
It might come in handy at town saving...
Yeah. So this is, you know, I mean, first of all, I think the, you know, the police department and Chief Hall have been, you know, wanting to do this for a while. This is not something that's new that's popped up. You know, he did have increased presence at the Denet last June after things happened there, and certainly when things get sort of stirred up, he always tries to reposition folks to help with that. So that's one piece of it. I also know that there's a number of folks, you know, in the town government that are very supportive of this, but ultimately it comes down to the town residents. So, you know, it means to who you can get to come to town meeting and can help to do that. It's all...
You won't have my mouth full at the actual town meeting.
That's what gets it done in the end. And I don't know where it is on the warrant, but, you know, hopefully it won't be too late of an evening.
We appreciate it, all the information and everything that you guys have already looked into before. We do appreciate it.
It's something that we spend a fair amount of time with. We don't talk too much about it because, again, it's security.
Yeah. And if there's anything outside of town meeting that families can help facilitate, whether it's funding or, you know, any of that kind of stuff, I mean, the number of families that have reached out to us personally and said, we'll fund it, we'll get resources involved, we can all pay X amount of dollars a year, and that'll cover the cost. And I'm like, all right, guys, I don't think we're there yet, but let's back up. So I mean, definitely as a...
We know it's not as easy, yeah, cut and dry, but...
But as a small community, they're definitely looking at it, and they're looking at how they can help and anything that families can do helps. So let's take it.
I think that's appreciated, and, you know, but it's also, I also look at that, too, that this is, you know, one of the, one thing that's also, a fair number of elementary schools actually have school resource officers in them, even ones that aren't really large schools. And so it's one of those things that, it's, again, so much more than just security, and so it's, I think, an important, it's an important piece to being able to, you know, it helps with community policing and really, you know, just having the students get to be part of, you know, the fact that the police are here as part of work with them. And so I think it's a good, it's a good choice all around. Yes, it means additional funds that we're expending each year, but I kind of don't have a good argument why you wouldn't do it. All right. Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for coming in and look forward to seeing you at town meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. On to more mundane things. The Denet roof. We did have the study done, the red study. It wasn't awesome, shall we say, but we have to have a follow-up meeting. And I have a follow-up with Matt to schedule that. I want to sit down with the consultants that did the work to better understand because there was some spots where there's significant moisture in the insulation, but I want to understand, can we repair that and then utilize, you know, the additional roofing treatment? Or is this something that we're really stuck with, just having to do a complete redo? So I will follow up and make sure that we have that meeting so we can get a better plan together of what we need to do. To that end, there was a question about $3,560, I think, for additional roof repairs. I already okayed that and said that that is, because we have the budget freeze on right now, to me, that is a required maintenance expense that we need to do. So I passed that along, but I didn't want to let the committee know that we had said to go ahead and do that. I don't think anything to do with the envelope of the building is a sort of, oh, we'll do that next year type of thing. We're going to get that sorted. So more to come about that and how we figure out what we need to do with the roof long-term in order to get it sort of back on track. On to unfinished business. So sports is kicking back up again. My assumption is nothing is better. Sort of the status quo. When we can get the sign, we'll get it up here. It keeps getting up as for trash bags. Now it's up for something else, so we'll get our slot in here at least, try that.
What is our next step, though?
Well, I mean, the next step is going back to the selectmen and talking to them about whether we're going to do some level of enforcement. And that's going to mean, who's going to do that? Are you going to have a control officer come up? Are you going to have periodic spins by, police spin by periodically? And if they see people up here, tell them to get off and then take it, I mean, that's the only next step is to do enforcement, to put signs up. No one sees them. If you put the sign up with the message, maybe some people will see it and still ignore it, maybe some people will see it and do something else. And then I guess another option is actually finding places that people can take their dogs and whether the town needs to look at doing some sort of a dog park in some spot. Because I think part of the issue is, for some people, it's folks that can't get back into either, you know, Cato's Ridge, Churchill Park, or Two Brooks, either because they can't go over the land because they're older and therefore, you know, being able to walk out in a field is an easier thing. If everyone just picked up after themselves, that would at least reduce the problem. Still shouldn't be having the dogs go to the bathroom on fields where kids are playing.
Isn't that Kingston Park, I'm concerned, too, Kingston Park as well?
I don't know.
Are you sure that it is? They just need to get a pass that's free, but it's just, that's not something we have to go share.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I think for regardless that are able-bodied and able to go over, you know, any little roots and things sticking up, I mean, both of the parks are great options for the dogs to be able to really get some good exercise, and there's some good open spaces in both, you know, both in Cato's Ridge over by the sand pit, but also Two Brooks has huge areas of open space for dogs to kind of run around, and it's nice and safe, and there aren't other people out there. But, yeah, I don't know. I mean, this is not an uncommon thing to have dogs not allowed on the athletic fields. It's pretty common, in fact, in most places.
Standard practice.
Right. So...
You look at it, you know, that's common.
Well, it's, maybe it's more fun when you know you're not supposed to be there. But, so I think immediate next step is that, and then I guess the collection is going back to the selectman and seeing if there's an appetite to go after some level of enforcement. So playground?
I have had some initial conversations for this round of playground on what our next step is. We need to get the mulch out of there. Where are our options for the mulch? I don't want just a pile of mulch out there, but we want to make sure we can use the mulch to the best of our ability. And my other concern is scheduling, I also put out there what the last day of school is, June 14th, so that's like this date, it's not the 15th. And then the last piece is the pricing. I'm just trying to confirm the price, see where pricing is compared to where it was when we started and compared to what we have still left available for resources.
Okay.
Because I know our goal is to complete the entire playground.
Correct.
So that's my, that's what I'm moving forward with. I'm optimistic.
And based on what you've talked about so far, it seems like we're going to be able to get the timing incorrectly?
It has not been confirmed.
Okay.
But that is my, that's my goal. So that's what I'm aiming for, as soon as we have what we can do to make that happen.
And checking the funds that are left and trying to get all that square footage done. Is there any concern on your part that we will not have enough funding to do that?
When we were reviewing this last time, we did have enough funding. So my goal is to check to see how much that has changed. And then one of the things I didn't include was what we did receive last year for school choice funds. So you know that's kind of dried up, so we may have a little pocket that may be still available to us. And then I'll also be confirming that with the town, because some of those funds, they keep kind of separate, so we don't, we're not looking at them traditionally, they're not in balance sheets that we're looking at all the time. So we just want to make sure we know all the pieces confirmed.
CPA, CPA balance.
Right. To see, I actually think we had used CPA funds at the beginning, but we had the funds from last year from DCE, the initial Chapter 70 funds.
Yep.
We have school choice funds, so we have a few pockets that we were accessing to complete the whole project.
And I know Kathy got us the $25,000 two budget cycles ago, but if there's a shortfall, I can probably get Senator Moran to put one in. Right now Kathy's voting the House budget tonight, so it's a little late for that step. We probably have two or three weeks before the Senate votes their version. I'm not sure if Senator Moran could put in an amendment, an earmark, if we have a shortfall, if it's like $10,000 or less.
Oh, well, I can confirm the funds first, and if I don't hear back on the, with the exact dollars, again, at least we confirm the funds, so I know what our options are.
Yeah, maybe look at that against what we reported last time, and then we can put a factor on that.
All right. I'm sure, I know it's changed, and now we have the additional cost of removing the mulch. So I said, well, we can use the machine to blow it in, can you, when that sucks it out? But that doesn't exist, apparently.
No.
In my world, I think it might.
And so I think everyone will be anxious about this, so can we periodically send an update around to the committee?
All right. Once I start getting some initial information, I can send an email out to let folks know what's happening.
That'd be great, yeah, because, as I keep saying, well, you know, it's going to be the first week of May you can do this, and it's like, oh, that's next week.
Yeah.
So it's moving fast here, and, you know, if you think about that, we're only, what, seven weeks to mid-June? Solar project, panels are up, the electrical connection is done, inspection is done. Now they're waiting on the connection piece of that. I have some documents that I received that I have to sign, and I want to catch up with you at the end, talk about that, because I think one of them probably should be, I don't mind signing it, but it should be signed up for the finance office. It's about being able to sign into the program and be able to see what our credits are and what we're using and not using and stuff like that.
Was it on the town side or on the school side?
It really isn't it being the school side. So like, there were three forms. One was the approval for use of property for Everforce, and Christine Joy signed that one. The other one is something about the meter, and the third one is about getting access to the system. So, it was a long, you know, long forms. So, but I just wanted to go over that with you. So hopefully we'll get that sorted, and we did get approved for whatever extension we needed, I sent an email about that, too, so it's moving forward. SCL Working Group?
So I just want to compliment the work that Ms. Markalini has put into synthesizing the efforts of the group. Really have made some progress in the couple of meetings that we've had, and she's even reached out to a consultant, pretty excited about that, but I don't want to tread on your waters, so I'll leave it over to you.
So we kind of continued with the initial stages of PBIS. We looked at two different models. We started to think about what this could potentially look like here at the Denet. We have a general framework and a vision of what it could look like in classrooms, as well as all the other school settings and on a whole school basis. Now that we're kind of at that point where we sort of have a good framework of what we think this should look like at the Denet, our vision is that we'd be able to do some work over the summer that involves teachers, parents, specialists, so that we can really take a whole school look at this and get a model together that is comprehensive and hits all the PBIS pieces. I did connect with a consultant, so I started to get an idea of what that could potentially look like for us and what that could bring to the Denet over the next year as we're sort of doing this big undertaking of bringing PBIS in and doing it well and doing it right.
And one of the big pieces of ESAR was to help with the social, emotional, and mental health of the students in our schools post-pandemic, as we all acknowledge. There was things going on with the social, emotional wellbeing and mental health of our kids long before the pandemic ever hit. So we still have a substantial amount of ESAR funds that we held back specifically for this kind of work. So glad to see that, you know, we put our own flavor, our Denet, Plumbton flavor to it, and now we can reach out to an expert so they can give us their, you know, 60,000-foot lens and help us really fine-tune it to make it a reality in the building and to make sure we do it right. You know, so I'm excited for our next meeting, which is this Thursday at 4:00, but I'm also excited to share this with the students and the parents and the community, to see that, you know, Denet really does want to make this a welcoming place for all students. We know academics are important, but if you don't feel like part of the community, if you don't feel safe, the best curriculum isn't going to do much for a kid. This is definitely number one priority is safety, you know, physical safety, but also the emotional and mental health safety of our students.
And even talking to the consultant, you know, there were pieces that I hadn't even thought about.
Correct.
You know, so I think bringing the information, all the notes that I took from that meeting, I've shared it in the drive with the other people that are currently on the committee. I've had a lot of teachers starting to ask about it, and they're curious about it, which I'm really excited, because we're going to need a lot more help getting this off the ground from all of the staff. I think we're in a good spot. I think that we have made a real solid start, at least so that we're using that.
And I do think it's really important to not only leverage the consultant for what they can tell us, but to have the consultant help, because everybody, everybody in the building has a day job, and that job requires all of your attention every day. And the thing that, I mean, and even, you know, even for me, when we do big projects, you know, at a very large company, we bring in consultants to help us kind of move things forward and move the ball, because that's their job, to kind of keep an eye on the ball and make sure that everyone delivers on it. And it ends up being much more productive, and you end up with, you know, sticking to the goals, not because we wouldn't want to anyways, but because everything else gets in the way and is distracting. So I think it's really, it's really good to use the funds this way, and it will help, I think, to make a much better and much stronger implementation and successful, which is really the key.
Thank you. And we're excited, you know, we really are. I think this could make a significant difference in a lot of different areas in our school that, you know, we do well, we could certainly do better.
Right.
So I'm excited about it.
Excellent. Any other questions? Town meeting items, just to recap. Well, clearly we have the article from the police department regarding a school resource officer. We have a series of articles to move money around, and I'll catch up with you on that and see where our final numbers are on that, so we can get those numbers in for that. And then, and again, moving the money around is to deal with the special ed expenses for this year that we need to make sure we have the funding in the right buckets for that. And then we also have the three classroom floors. That's a warrant article as well. I think that's, I think that's it for this year. All right. Mr. Fraser, admin review?
So evaluations of the superintendent are due to myself and Karen by the end of this week, the 28th. Admin review will be meeting on May 4th at 6:00 in the library to go over the evaluations and give me direction as to what to include in the consensus evaluation. That will be presented at a joint meeting of the Union 31 School Committee members and Silver Lake Regional School Committee members on May 10th, which is a Wednesday at 6:00, for discussion and then a vote on the evaluation. So we have quite a few important dates coming up, but it is one of the four main duties of a school committee member, is the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent. So I encourage everyone to do that. A member of our committee was the first to submit, so I'm very happy to see that.
That wasn't me. So, I got the reminder today, yes, it will be done by Friday.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Negotiations. We will be having an executive session at the end of this to talk, speak to what we plan to do from a custodian perspective, and that's all we have on that one. Union 31, as you said, Jason, that meeting will be on the 10th May at Silver Lake. Capitol and Prun, we talked about the roof already, so that brings us back to you for legislative.
So the House Ways and Means budget came out. Ironically, Plumbton for schools is down about $2,500 compared to the governor's budget, which doesn't typically happen, but it's all around the adjustments made for reimbursement for charter schools. And again, charter schools, after a student has been out of our care for three years, 100% of our Chapter 70 funds goes towards that student. And we've tried to balance out, making it fair to the town and also making it fair to the school that's now educating that child. So there's constant readjustments to how much we're being charged and how much the state reimburses us for. So the current version just says it's down about $2,500, but Rep. LaNtra tonight with her counterparts are debating the budget in the full house, and it still has to go to the Senate Ways and Means, the Senate, and then it has to go to a reconciliation committee meeting, and finally on to the governor for her assignment as well. So there's still a lot of movement that can occur, but generally you don't anticipate any movement down, as Christina said before, and I've said it as well. Governor's budget is usually considered the floor, and I mean, the $2,500 difference, I would say, still holds pretty close to that BDF.
Yep.
So that's where we are. We got a day on the Hill hosted by MASC at the U.S. Club in Boston is May 4th. Programming in the morning, lunch at the State House, and then meetings with your reps and senators, if you'd like to join. There's still space available. The district covers the cost from the day payable to MASC.
I don't believe we had any signature warrants.
There are no single signature warrants, but we do have four warrants tonight circulating totaling $82,646. totaling $82,646.75.
So back to you on policy.
So we're most likely going to have a policy meeting in June after all of the town meetings and town elections have occurred and reorganizations have happened. One of the members of the Halifax School Committee is also in SRO for their day job and had some recommendations about the security camera language. So we're just going to bring that back to the policy subcommittee and see if there's any interest in moving on that language again.
All right. Mr. Vito?
Thank you very much. Our current enrollment stands at 241 students. I usually like to be positive with my school updates. Unfortunately, I have to share a nice water story that I know you always enjoy, John. On Good Friday, which is April 7th, I got a call from Steve Pello, our tech director. Steve was in here checking some machines, and he reported that some water was coming from the water closet. Upon further inspection, it was a lot of water. And Matt Durkey helped me put this together. So if the language sounds, I'm definitely not a plumber or an electrician, but here goes. So the issue was with the pressure relief valve. It did what it was supposed to do. System pressure was too high and blood off the water through the pressure relief valve. When I got here, Matt and Julie were removing water from the main hallway. I jumped in. Paul came through later after. Servper was called in to dry everything out. And, excuse me, last week, they were in here replacing the two feet of drywall up on impacted areas. The system has since been run through electrically and pump control-wise and confirmed to normal operation. Electrician and plumbers confirmed that things are running smoothly. So that was also the day that we had a power shut-off. Between the plumber, the electrician, and our system operator, nobody could tell me with a real clear definitive answer to one thing have to do with the other. John and I spoke about this, and it was either an amazing coincidence or something just went awry.
You don't. I mean, I guess you never really have the power off, do you? Right? Because if the power goes out and the generator kicks in, and so that system is always powered. But it still seems weird that it would build up pressure.
I don't know.
And the drain, and there's a drain in there, but it couldn't keep up in any way, shape, or form, right?
No, the water operator indicated that we lost about 4,000 gallons of water. If Steve Pello had not been here on that day, and that would have gone unchecked all day Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, we would have had a major problem here.
So I guess the next question, well, so if we can't figure out why it did it, I guess the next question is, should we be looking at putting in some sort of water sensors? Did Matt already suggest that?
It came up, yes.
I think we should look into doing that. And I would suggest that that isn't a nice-to-have, that we should figure out how to, because we have an alarm system here, right?
Correct.
So they should be able to put that in with the alarm system and add it in wirelessly in any places, like certainly the water room, but probably also down in the boiler room. We should have some sensors to be able to kick on if something like that goes off. Because there are a few places where you can get significant water flow. You're not typically going to get that same amount out of a bathroom.
No.
But at least there, and then maybe the bathroom should add it, too. But, I mean, just to give perspective, I mean, we're talking about pretty much the whole front entryway. We're talking a good part of the main hallway, Christine's office.
Past the cafeteria, up to that next bank of offices where speech and language and OQPT would be.
So that, and that's with all the work that was being done to keep pushing water out while waiting to get it shut off. I mean, we could have, I mean, the greater issue is, I mean, certainly we should be concerned about money being spent in insurance claims, but the greater issue is that no school was lost as a result of this because of the quick action. But we could have been out of school for a week, at least, if it had gotten all the way down. And, yeah, and if it had gotten over to the gym. So that's a pretty big, I mean, it's a lot of damage. So we're lucky.
It was, it was interesting to see and to try to.
That's a small way to put it.
I was not expecting what I saw. When Steve first called, said there's a little water. From time to time, we get some overflow, it happens. But when I opened up the office door, it was, it was significant. It was, I'm glad Steve was here.
Yeah.
Let's keep it simple.
Christine, it's nice and clean carpet.
Absolutely.
I was saying earlier, I mean, Servper did an amazing job. I kind of, I held my breath when I walked into my office that first day. You would never know that anything had happened in there. I mean, they did a phenomenal job.
I don't want to share all bad news, John. So some, some good news is that English Language Arts MCAS will be done for every student in this building on Wednesday. And we'll kick off with math on the week of May 8th. And we have lots of teachers planning lots of field trips and fun end-of-the-year activities. And this year is flying by, it really is. But it's going to be a good, positive end to the year for everybody. Thank you.
I have a water-related question. Where is the system located?
Oh, in the parking lot, right by the gym entrance.
So that has to be pumped up into the building?
Correct.
And I know we've had that inspected.
Mm-hmm.
And dove on or something recently, we had a.
Yeah, they did some work to it a couple of years ago.
Couple of years.
Yeah, and some repairs.
But it's not on the list.
Me, too.
That would just not be cool. All right, Christine?
I was going to try to mention the highlights tonight in the financial, but you have your electronic package. But there really haven't been any changes since our last financial. There are just, I think, two or three deficits to the rest of the budget that we manage within their categories. The exception to that is special education. That deficit right now is decreased by $5,000. Special education is trying to keep up to date with, giving timely, timely updates, so that we can kind of keep track of this and see what else is going on. All the information has been submitted for the extraordinary relief submission that was due the end of March. They received a couple of questions. All the questions were answered successfully. And they're expecting that we're receiving $34 in extraordinary relief in this current year.
Thirty-four thousand?
I'm sorry, 34,000. What did I say?
Thirty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that far ahead.
Here's a cup of coffee.
Thirty-four thousand!
Here's a cup of coffee and a bag of donuts. Good luck, guys.
So that, we believe that process is complete, and these estimates were based on a 75% reimbursement. We have not heard what that final amount is. I've asked, once we know what that final amount is, please let me know. I know we have discussed possible areas where there are funds and auditistic location is one of those areas. And we are working on the balance of the budget projecting to June 3rd to see if there are other might be savings in the current year budget.
Yeah. So we have an article on the transfer of the 60 from voc into special ed. So that's already on there. That one's all set. The one that we need to know, the number four, or at least your best guess, and we can always adjust it on floor if we need to, but I think they want to send it with a number, would be what we need the town to pony up that we are, because we're going to, we have a warrant article to transfer from the general education line to special ed. And so we need to know what, we need to know what that is, and then what we need the town to cover.
So there'd be three. There'd be one from audit, vocational, to special education.
That one's all set. So we know that, that's the 60.
And then there'd be from regular day to special education, and then from the town.
And then, and then if we need the town to make up the difference, you know, I know we have some, I know we have some spots in there that we haven't funded because we haven't been able to get people in. So that may help. But if we get, whatever we need, we need to know what we're passing over, and we need to know what the town needs to contribute, if any.
When would you like to see that by?
I'll follow up with Liz. I think, I think we need it this week, but let me figure out when this week.
Okay, all right.
Because they want it to, I think they want it in the, it might be, it might be Wednesday. Let me ask her. So I'll message her, and I'll let you know.
Motion to accept person's financial report.
In a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Mr. Lynch, take us home.
Thank you for this month's curriculum instruction and assessment update. Just want to highlight the learning walks that Mr. Benito and Ms. Markelini, Dr. Koo and I participated in on Friday, March 31st, which was the Friday after our last meeting. We were joined by Dr. Pia Durkin from Research for Better Teaching. We split into two groups, visited six total classrooms, with a focus on using multiple means, data, and student responses to inform instruction. We saw many good things. It's always wonderful to see the work firsthand happening here at the Dennet. That visit was followed up with a statewide email from Mr. Benito and Ms. Markelini with general strengths and areas of focus. And our work this year has helped to improve feedback to staff and efforts to keep the focus on instructional practices that raise growth and student achievement. And we appreciate Mr. Benito's and Ms. Markelini's and staff's efforts to make progress toward our student learning goals and using learning walks as a way to think about our practice. So that's our second and final iteration of that. We've done two learning walks at each building. So we really appreciate the work that's been done here at Dennet. And it's been good to have consistent practices among the elementaries and also really thinking about the work that's unique to the school. So just wanted to give you an update on that work that we've all been engaged in.
And then, any update with respect to district update from John? Should I give you anything or nothing?
No district update today.
All right. Anything else? I think I need a motion to adjourn and to go into, let's go into executive session. Oh, it's, it is on here, so.
It is.
Yep.
Yeah, but this is your last, your last regular meeting.
It is. But I get to go to a joint meeting. Even better.
Gotcha. I have not been on the school committee here at Dennet without you being on the school committee here at Dennet. So it's going to be very strange coming in in June without you here. Appreciate over the eight years of you sitting in the chair, the leadership you've shown. And your presence is going to be deeply missed.
Well, thank you. It's very kind, very kind. But I was supposed to be gone three years ago. So you got me for an extra three. You can thank, you can thank 14 people in Plimpton for that who wrote me in.
It's almost everybody.
So, no, but thank you. It's been a, I tended to do this for one, three-year term while my fourth grader went through fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. He is graduating from Silver Lake in June. So it is definitely time to move on. And I can now do only two other jobs for the town instead of three. It has been a pleasure to do this. It's been a pleasure to learn as much as I have with this. And, you know, even though I won't be sitting on this side, you always have a supporter in the audience and the board of selectmen to help out as we can. And I wish the committee and the school and the teachers and everything all the best of luck as we keep moving forward. There we go.
I make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to regular under Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body in the chair, so declares the PTA and the custodians. And pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2187, comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law for the approval of our executive session minutes from March 27th to 2023.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you and good night.